Like to call the meeting order? Mrs. Burns, roll call please.
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Mr. Feather is absent with prior notice. Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Boyle?
Present.
Mrs. Hellenbeck?
Present.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mr. Marington?
Here.
Mr. Parentano?
Here.
The Board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and school safety and security. The district mission statement, "The Nishamani community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner." Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you.
John has an announcement.
Mr. Torrenti?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. This is a statement on the PHRC versus Nishamani School District litigation. As you may know, there is currently ongoing litigation in which the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission is suing the Nishamani School District. In the interest of keeping the community informed of issues that affect the district, we are providing information regarding this litigation. The PHRC contends that the district's Redskins team name and related Native American imagery discriminates against Native American students and creates a hostile environment in the district's schools. The PHRC's lawsuit has its roots in a separate claim of discrimination filed with the commission in 2013 by a community member on behalf of her child who was then a Nishamani student. The claim asserted that the child was Native American and was suffering educational and other harm due to the Redskins team name and related imagery. In October of 2015, the claim on behalf of that student was voluntarily dismissed. Very shortly thereafter, in 2015, the PHRC initiated the presently pending litigation. The PHRC filed a complaint regarding the district's Redskins team name in which the PHRC serves as the complainant. The Pennsylvania Human Relations Act permits the PHRC to act as both the complaining party and plaintiff, as well as the hearing officer and/or finding of fact in this case. In its lawsuit, the PHRC contends that the district, in having a Redskins team name and related Native American imagery, discriminates against Native American students and creates a hostile educational environment. The PHRC further contends that non-Native American students are harmed, as well due to a negative learning environment and being imparted with a negative view of Native American people and their culture. The district denies the allegations in the PHRC's lawsuit and through its counsel is defending the case as it did in the 2013 case. The district contends that the PHRC's allegations are unfounded. At present, a public hearing in this case is scheduled to occur between January 7th through January 11th of 2019. The PHRC has not yet determined the location of that public hearing, but it will occur in Bucks County. Since the hearing is public, members of the public are entitled to attend. We will announce the exact date and location of the public hearing when it is set. Finally, because the litigation is ongoing, we cannot discuss it beyond the general information that I have just read in this statement.
Thank you, Mr. Torrenti. That brings us to the superintendent's report. Mr. Jones?
Hello and welcome, everyone. We have a lot of students in the audience. I guess it's because you heard there might be some early snow coming up, and you wanted to hear what my decision was going to be, whether we should close school or not. We're not closing school yet, hopefully, right? I have a few announcements I'd like to make in connection to my superintendent's report. It's available on Board Docs for the public to see, but it's nice to spotlight people here as well and some of the good things that are happening in our school district. First off, we hand out the "We Build Future" awards to any of our adults in our school community who are supporting the school mission or part of the effort to accomplish our district's strategic plan. And so last month, we want to highlight the people who were the recipients of these awards. They included Brian Suter, lead science teacher at the high school, Jan King, lead health and PE teacher, actually, they're lead teachers for the district, they help us in those areas, they both teach at the high school, Karen Blumenfeld, PTO president at Maple Point here, mom, Anne Schmidt, social studies teacher and chair, Maple Point, Kim Kridlin, second grade teacher at Schweitzer, and Gaila Schmitz, instructional assistant at Schweitzer. So every month, I get to get out to a lot of the different schools here in the district and recognize a lot of good people who are helping us. We're well over 100 people who've been able to be recognized over the course of the last year plus, and we look forward to seeing some more people this month, too. This is American Education Week. The Board did pass a resolution acknowledging that and thanking people for the good work to provide these public schools for the Nishamani community. And in the schools this week, some nice things are happening to recognize our educators. We thank the many Nishamani educators who go out of their way to help us fulfill that district mission and empower our students to be productive citizens and lifelong learners. We have really good people making strong choices that help impact each individual child each and every day, and we're thankful for all the good work they do. Our facilities and planning board committee, they have a road show. They travel. They're the only committee that's out on the road, and so tomorrow night, they will be at Pequesting Middle School for a 6:30 meeting in the library there. It's a nice opportunity for them to see our buildings and to hear from our facilities people directly. And so five meetings this year, we'll get them out to five different schools, and then five meetings next year, we'll complete the circuit, and we'll probably go back and do it again. So this is a new committee for the Board. This is a new idea. It worked well. We were at Hoover, oh, Hoover, in the house tonight. We were at Hoover two months ago, and already here we come with Pequesting. So that's tomorrow night, 6:30, in their library. The enrollment report for October is attached to my superintendent's report. We have a lot of schools that are engaged in collecting food and other products to help out during the holiday season for families that are in need. Sometimes those families are very connected here to our schools, sometimes in our school communities. I had in my report, just because they were out of the gate early, Maple Point doing some good work, but really, any one of our elementary schools, any one of our secondary schools are engaged in some type of good activity. If you wanted to and looking for a spot to drop off a bag of food or anything that you think would be worthy of getting out to people, drop it off to a main office in any of our schools, and we'll take care of you, because we're helping out a lot of people. It's good effort here, and it's really part of that productive citizenship work that we try to instill upon our students and to see that the community here at the school takes care of the larger community. Here in our boardroom, we put up student artwork each month, and so this month, this is the Pequesting Middle School Art Teachers. I want to thank Ms. Goodheart Roof, Ms. Louises, and Ms. Stork for the work that they've done with their students. There's some real nice displays of how color is being used, perspective is being used, and just some nice artistry on the part of our middle school age students, and it's nice to see the different types of projects that are occurring across the district. We get to see all the schools throughout the school year. A nice story in the report about the Maple Point men, it's the males there who are doing what they call, I want to get it right, hmm, they're growing their beards, something for November.
Carl Sandberg.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carl Sandberg, Carl Sandberg. At No Shave November, and they're doing proceeds to St. Jude Children's Hospital. It's a pediatric medical research center that does their work for their families at no charge. Our gentleman there raised $3,000 last year. They have many more involved this year, 17 of them. I saw, it is Carl Sandberg, I saw the assistant principal here today, he said it's bothering him already. It's early in November. You may want to take a look at my report, but in a couple of weeks at our actual November meeting, when we do our action items, we're going to be approving, I hope we'll be approving our school calendar for the 1920 school year, and so attach to the report, attach to the agenda tonight, and up for discussion, and then approval at our next meeting is the 1920 school calendar. And then congratulations to our high school sports teams, a lot of nice successes this fall season, as well as all our middle school programs that do, they all do good work for our students and keep them engaged in some athletic pursuits, and that's good. Good to be healthy. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. This month, on Board Docs, there's a report from Mr. Mayen, our assistant to the superintendent and director of administration, and his semi-annual report is on there if anyone wants to take a look at it. That brings us to our presentation for this evening. I'll turn it back to Mr. Jones.
Board has presentations occurring typically at our work session, and this year, we have 10 meetings during the year. Six of the meetings are going to be a chance to spotlight our schools. Our six elementary schools are up for us this year, and so tonight, we have a lot of Hoover Hawks in the audience. Thank you so much for being here. I'm going to introduce your principal, Dr. G., and then you are going to present to the school some of the good work that's happening, or to the school board, some of the good work that's happening at your school.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Dave Glennon, principal at Hoover Elementary. We are so excited to share with you some of the wonderful things that are happening at our school. I'd like to first recognize, and you can just sort of wave if you're here, Ms. Patty Jackson, fourth grade teacher and leadership club sponsor, and Ms. Stacy Scale, fourth grade teacher and leadership club sponsor. Jennifer Gaffed is also a fourth grade teacher and a leadership club sponsor, but I don't think she could make it tonight. And we have Ms. Casey Stino, who's a third and fourth grade teacher. Thank you for being here tonight. We were very excited to see that you guys started your meeting with the pledge. We start our day every morning with the pledge, and then we also do the Hoover Hawk mission. And some of the words in the Hoover Hawk mission might be very familiar to you, so we wanted to share that mission with you, and then there will be a quiz a little bit later, okay? So pay attention. So if you could, Hoover Hawks, why don't you stand up so we can teach the Board the mission? Ready? "I am a Hoover Hawk. I fly with pride. I am a leader. I'm a productive citizen and a lifelong learner. I am respectful, responsible, and safe at all times. I know how to use the seven habits to build my future. I work hard to make everyone feel welcome at our school. I am thankful that my teacher knows how to make learning fun for everyone." Great job. You can have a seat. Now, some of those words, like I said, might be familiar to you. Some of you might have said, "What's this thing about seven habits? Helping the seven habits build your future?" Well, this comes from Stephen Covey, and I think Mr. Ryan Leenhouser wants to share a little bit about the seven habits. Ryan? Oh, I'm sorry, Chelsea Barnes, Chelsea Barnes, my fault, my fault.
My name, my name, my name is Chelsea Barnes. At Herbert Hoover Elementary, we practice the seven habits of happy kids every day to help us become productive citizens and lifelong learners. Our leadership club has 17 members and meets every Friday morning at 8:20 a.m. We also meet during recess to work service projects that benefit our school and community. These are the seven habits of happy kids. Habit one, be proactive. Habit two, begin with the end in mind. Habit three, put first things first. Habit four, think win-win. Habit five, seek first to understand, then to be understood. Habit six, synergize, and habit seven, sharpen the saw. My favorite habit is habit three, put first things first, because it helps me to get important things finished.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chelsea Barnes. I appreciate that. And we also have someone who wants to talk a little bit about the leadership club. That would be Ryan Leenhouser. Thank you, Ryan.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Ryan Leenhouser. My favorite habit is think win-win, because everyone can get what they need and remain happy. In October, our club ran a scare away hunger food drive and donated to the local food pantry. During November, we are collecting for our Thanksgiving food drive. In December, we will organize the giving tree and collect hats, gloves, and mittens to donate to the local shelter. We'd like to invite the Nishamani school board to our Leadership Day on May 17th, 2019. We will be sending an invitation in the near future.
Good job.
All right. Thank you so much, Ryan. Appreciate it. All right, so to prepare for this meeting, to get the kids excited about it, they had to understand what a board meeting was. So we had to talk about what you folks do on a daily basis, and one of the things we talked about was they had these Chromebooks because of you. And our kids are using these Chromebooks all day, every day. They absolutely love them. Our teachers love them. When I told some of the teachers that we would have to bring a couple tonight, they said, "Ooh, we've been using them all day. We're going to have to charge them. I'm not sure there'll be time." So they're definitely getting their use, but we want to show you how much fun they can be. So we've got folks from Ms. Stino's class who can help you, and all of the Hoover Hawks, they use this all the time. Anybody in the audience with a smartphone or the computer can play. Any of the Board members can play on their own computers, or we can have any of our students help you. So how about Ms. Stino's class? Why don't you see if any Board member, or Mr. Jones, or Ms. Markowitz needs any help, and anybody else? If you need help, just raise a hand, and then we'll start the game in a few minutes. But even if you can't log on, we can do it together, kind of. So it's not that hard. We can do it together. We can have teams. Let's try and make sure if you're a Board member, you're using, you know, a really nice name. Don't use any inappropriate names up there. We want good names, okay?
Can we ask?
Yeah, you can ask. Go ahead and ask if anybody needs help.
What are we going to do? Tell them. Just say this is the link. It's scary.
There might be members of the audience who need help, too. If you're not in yet, that's okay.
Do we have to?
I can tell. I can tell.
Thank you. Thank you for tuning in.
I think we're ready, and I need, I need the members of the Board and the public who are playing to know, you get more points if you're accurate, but you also get more points if you're speedy. So you have to balance between, are you going to go fast, are you going to go slow, and are you going to think about it? And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Jackson. You can start clicking the buttons. I think we'll start, and I'll read it aloud in case you can't see it, all right? Here we go. Let's try it. 35 people are in. All right, there's 10 questions. Here we go. "The Nishamani community believes that students should have 28 hours of homework a night, recess should only be scheduled for one day a week, laughter, joy, and hope are essential for a quality life, students should attend school on Saturdays. What does the Nishamani community believe?" 30 people got it right. 30 people got it right. Now, let's look at this. Who's in the lead? Who's in the lead, Ms. Jackson? Hit next. Yeah. Jenna Smith's in the lead, then Chelsea, then Cassidy, then MTF Four, and then Ada. I don't see many Board members up there. Let's try. Come on. Let's try. All right, next one. "The Nishamani community believes that all children are the future, people learn in different ways and at different rates, all people can learn, or answers one, two, and three are all correct." Look at this. I can see that 16 people got it right. 12 thought children are the future, though, and that is correct, because one, two, and three are all correct. So this gives some great assessment data that teachers can use right away. We might have to review some of the beliefs with the Board, just to make sure that you know all of them, all right?
It was a computer error.
Oh, a computer error. That happens. That happens. Let's keep going, Ms. Jackson. Jenna's in the lead, Chelsea Dillon's up there now, Jenna's mom, all right, and Ludwig. All right. I don't see Mr. Jones. "If I'm feeling good and ready to learn, I'm in the blank zone, the red zone, the yellow zone, the blue zone, or the green zone. If I'm feeling good and ready to learn, I'm in which zone?" 28 people said the green zone. Good job. Good job. All right, let's see who's in the lead. Jenna's still in the lead, followed by Chelsea Dillon, Jen F., and then a smiley face. That's probably a Board member, I'm sure. All right, next one. "If you want to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner, you should probably never do your homework, sleep until noon, begin with the end in mind, or give up if 34 people said begin with the end in mind. That sounds like it's one of our habits. That's one of those seven habits. Who's in the lead, Ms. Jackson? Chelsea's in the lead, Jenna, Dillon, Jen F., and smiley face. All right. "If you want to experience success during recess or during a board meeting, you should probably be mean, scream and yell, give up if you experience a challenge, or think win-win." If you want to experience success at recess or during a board meeting? 37. Everybody, think win-win. When we think win-win on the playground, we do okay. All right, Ms. Jackson. 10 players just hit answer streak five. Good job.
Dr. G., if you could show the top 17 people, you'd see my name.
Okay. I'm sure of that, Mr. Jones. I am sure of that.
I'm going to go to the top 10.
"Sometimes at school or during a board meeting, it's a good idea to take time to sharpen the saw, show up late, forget to do your homework, interrupt the person who's speaking." 32 people said take time to sharpen the saw. Sounds like another good habit. All right, Jenna, Chelsea, Dillon, Jen. Dillon Hunt is the highest climber. He's up three places since last time. Good job, Dillon. All right, next. "If you want to see people building futures, you should probably stop by Hoover, hmm, during American Education Week in July, during the Hoover Leadership Day, or any school day. It's happening every day at Hoover." Oh, spread out there a little bit. We're going to have to think about that. Four players reached answer streak sevens. They got seven right in a row. Mrs. Markowitz loves French poetry. Writing songs, math, or playing the drums? 31 people think she helps us with math. The last time I checked, she helps us with $180 million budget. That's amazing, and somewhere in there, she found the money for these Chromebooks. So how about a round of applause for Ms. Markowitz? We appreciate that. All right, let's keep going. Jenna, Chelsea, Supersonic, Jen F., Dillon Lawrence. "The Board made a great decision when they purchased Chromebooks for third and fourth grade students. True or false?" 35 people said true. Thank you, Board. All right, Jenna, Chelsea, Supersonic. "When Mr. Jones decides to declare a snow day, Hoover's teachers come into school to shovel the parking lot? Dr. G. sleeps till noon? Hoover students think Mr. Jones is the best superintendent, or Hoover students are usually Mr. Jones is the best superintendent. Let's give him a round of applause, too. Great job. All right, look at the podium. Jenna, 12,912 points, 10 out of 10. Chelsea, Supersonic, great job. Thank you to everybody who played. We appreciate it. Thank you to all of our students. You did a great job. And one more time, boys and girls, do you think it was a good idea that we got Chromebooks? Should we try and say thank you one more time to the Board for helping us with that? All right. Great job.
All right, so if we played a little longer, like another half hour, I would have made it up into the top five, I think. I need it more time. Dr. G., I appreciate that, because, you know, our Board members, they make a lot of decisions, and they don't get to see sometimes how it affects you. And so these Chromebooks, they do a lot. This was one example of what they do for us, and they allow for you to be very interactive, and they kind of let you see real fast what's happening overall, for the teacher to see very quickly what's happening overall. But you do use those Chromebooks, do you use those Chromebooks just for these kinds of games, or do you use them for anything else?
Everything.
Everything else?
A lot of things.
A lot of things, right. And I don't know, does anybody have, is any, I don't know the answer to this, I'm afraid to ask it, but is anyone using a Google Classroom, like where you do use that Google Classroom and you save documents? Does anybody have a teacher who comments on your documents, or are they doing that, too? I know this is all new for our teachers and for you, but look, our teachers are able to read documents right on your Google Classroom and put comments in there, and the public will enjoy this. and the public will enjoy this, and the board members will appreciate this, too. Because this is truly indicative of the fact that teachers don't stop. Our teachers will be making those comments. They say, well, I really like it because now I can put those comments on there like while I'm watching TV at nighttime. I mean, it really, the technology today has been very helpful in many ways. In other ways, it doesn't, our day never ends. And our teachers' days, they typically never have ended before, but instead of lugging home a lot of books and to have to grade notebooks or look through notebooks, they can actually just log right in and see your papers through their Google Classroom connection. It's kind of neat to hear you say that everything, this is only our second year. We're just barely into that second year. It was really nice for you to show. We have now, in your kindergarten and first grade, iPads for every, just about, we're just about at one-to-one. Most classes, one-to-one. Some of our bigger classes might be missing one or two. But by next year, we'll be one-to-one with iPads. If we're not there this year, and two, three, four has the Chromebook. So we're doing a lot of neat things. And Hoover, you're the first to show the board directly that those Chromebooks are alive and working. So thank you so much. Thank you for coming out tonight. We have, we took a picture already, so that was good. We have a few more coming, so we're gonna take another picture right now. And then we have a certificate for you all, and we appreciate your parents bringing you out tonight. Tomorrow in school, we'll get that certificate out to you. If not tomorrow, the next day, we gotta get some signatures on it as well. And then we'll let you get home so that you can get all that readiness for school tomorrow because it's not gonna snow tonight, so we'll all school tomorrow. All right? Thank you again, Dr. G. Thank you.
No, I don't think Mrs. Steen wants you to have water. I don't think Dr. G wants you to have water here.
No, not here. I'll get you some later.
That's very, very good.
All right, count of three. Hoover Hawks Fly with Pride, okay? One, two, three.
Hoover Hawks Fly with Pride!
This is a great time to sneak out, Mom and Dad. This is my theme, back porch chores. Thank you so much for coming out tonight.
That was the most interactive presentation.
I'm telling you, this was one of the best board meetings.
Won't be anybody left now.
You know, it's like that block game where, like, you know, like the trivia.
Yeah, you turn it into, you turn it into.
It's very competitive. It's like, you know, the trivia. You know, where you have, like, playing the board, doing things. Not that I go to the.
I missed one question. I was almost off the top ten.
See there?
I had one question.
Yeah, we're doing good. Are we doing good?
Yeah.
And it's interactive. They see the picture of which state it is.
Yeah. It's just hard because we couldn't see all the answers, all the questions.
And you can print the results and use it as a quiz for everyone.
Oh.
Yeah, it's good tool. It's awesome.
So you can go ahead and get the individual, each kid then.
Print the results. The teacher can print all the results for the kids.
And you make what are the questions and answers and.
We would do the budget that way.
Yeah.
All right, now we'll play with the echo in the room now, since everyone left. That brings us to the first public comment section. Ms. Burns, anyone sign up?
Mr. Brodus.
Good evening. I'm Steve Brodus from Flowers Mill. You know, unfortunately, W.C. Field says he should never follow children.
I didn't stop you.
No. It's always a tough act to follow. But I did want to bring up something, and I don't know if it'll get discussed later. But, you know, last week, there was a meeting with Aramark Food Service and members of the board who are on the Business Operations Committee. And one of the items discussed dealt with obviously the waste of a lot of the food and how to, you know, deal with that, the waste. Because a lot of the children seem to be throwing out food without trying it. So coincidentally, yesterday, the Nishami Education Foundation was going over their grants, grant requests from the teachers. And one of which happened to deal with a proposal was for fresh fruit and veggie tasting for grades K to four. And it was a proposal whereby they would run on ten weeks, ten different tastings, five for vegetables and five for fruits. And to me, it seemed like a way to handle the problem that Ms. Hollenbeck had raised in the schools. Why is the food getting thrown out? But they wanted the NEF to fund this. I think this should be done by Aramark. Aramark can provide the food. They ought to have a meeting with this particular teacher, see if it can be worked out between Aramark and the school district because they, Aramark has a new kind of forecasting thing of how much they have to send to various schools, and whether it works or not is a different story. But I don't think, I think that they should be the ones who provide these vegetables for ten weeks. If it works in one school, it'll work in the other schools. But it's a way to get started so that, number one, you know, if we need more food and kids are starting to eat, they'll make money, we'll make money, and everybody will be happy, especially the parents, whose children will be eating the food rather than saying it's bad. So that's it. I can give you the name of the teacher who proposed, and I think you could take it from there. Thank you.
That brings us to our first action item tonight. Resolve that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following retirements, resignations of certified staff. Margaret Monahan resignation effective 11/9/2018. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbeck. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Personal support. Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Resolve that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments of support staff. Sandra Concorde, van driver transportation. Kenneth Hill, van driver transportation. And Garnino Ziger, bus driver transportation.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Perattano. Any comments or questions?
I'd just like to say I apologize if I pronounce anybody's names wrong.
Duly noted. Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. The following items are for approval at the public meeting. 4.01 Budget Transfers. 4.02 Tax Assessment Appeal. 4.03 Acceptance of Donation. 4.05 The 2019 to 2020 School Calendar. 4.06 Out-of-District Placements. 4.07 Homebound Instruction. 4.08 Overnight Trips. 4.09 Sunday Facility Usage. It's not on there.
It's not?
No.
It is on there. It should be on there. It's the first reading of Board Policy Series 100. They are available on Board Docs. I'm not sure why it didn't make our, it wouldn't have anything other than just simply saying first reading because it's too much information there for it. But all available on Board Docs, first reading of the 100 series programs. Thank you.
That's 4.04.
4.04.
All right, now that we have that resolved, it brings us to committee reports. Business operations, Mrs. Hollenbeck?
We did have a business operations meeting last week, last Wednesday, I believe it was. And it was all in regards to food services. We are still getting to the bottom of some things and working on communication and putting some new proposals into play. We did have a sample of the food that was mostly from the high school. Some of it was from the middle school, and everything that we did sample was very good. So I am pleased with how the food tasted. And I went back and reported to my kids that they just need to try the food instead of just looking at it and saying it's yucky without trying it first. So that is still a work in progress, and we'll continue to update on that. The next business operations meeting is January. Tentatively, it's the fifteenth of the new year. There might be a change in that, and we will get back to you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Educational Development, Ms. Boyle?
Okay, the last Ed Development meeting was on Tuesday, October 16th. And the following topics were discussed. The new CNI department configuration. We also discussed the state assessment results and the future-ready P.A. index. And we received an overview of new programs and initiatives that's going to be for this year. And the next meeting will be in January.
Thank you. Facilities and Planning. As Mr. Jones said earlier, the next meeting is tomorrow night at Pocessin at 6:30. All are welcome. Policy, Mrs. Boyle?
Okay, the second reading of policy at Series 100 will be presented for board review during the November 27th meeting. And our next committee meeting will be determined at a later date. And the agenda for the next policy meeting will be the Series 800, which is operations.
And why don't you do the IU Board, too?
Okay, the next, the IU meeting is going to be on the 20th. Okay, in Doylestown, 7 o'clock.
Thank you. The Shamini Education Foundation, since Mr. Feather's not here, I will read what he was supposed to read. This month, the Nishamani Education Foundation has been very active. The Eagles Ticket Raffle raised over a thousand dollars, and the winner was Nishamani Business Administrator Barbara Markowitz. The Election Day Dining for a Dollars Event in Bertucci's was once again a big success. Many thanks to all those that participated in these two fundraisers. NFE volunteers set up a table at Langhorne Harvest Day to sell raffle tickets and meet the community. Twenty-five NEF mini-grant proposals from throughout the district were received by the November 3rd deadline. The NEF Board met on November 12th to consider the applications, and the winners will be announced before Thanksgiving. The next NEF Board meeting will be held Monday, December 10th, 4:00 p.m. at Maple Point. Anybody interested is welcome to attend. Brings us to the PSBA Liaison. Mr. Perattano?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. November, October, November was a busy month for legislation up in Harrisburg. Many laws were passed. We talked about before that Act 158 regulating the graduation requirement is now law. Everybody is relieved that we now have stability in our requirements going for the next few years. That's a good thing. The, what was it here? Sunshine Act Executive Session for Safety. For those that don't know what that is, it's Act 155. Before this act was passed, the board was not able to discuss safety matters in executive sessions. They had it been discussed in front of the public. Not that we don't want to keep our public informed, but there's many matters regarding safety and safety in our schools that we don't want to publicize. So we need to have a more secure setting to talk about them. And this greatly will improve the communication we can have between the board and our administrators to guarantee that our buildings and environment offer the highest safety for our students and what they deserve. On that issue, it's been a big topic of late, is the introduction of SRO officers. Nishamani currently has one in Middletown. Currently, we're working with Middletown. They've approached us and asked us that they would like to supply a second officer, which we're greatly appreciative of. The district is currently in talks with Lower Southampton about adding an SRO officer in the Lower Southampton area. Of course, all these things require funding. You know, district and the, shared by the district and the local municipality. We try to work them out to the, you know, most amicable arrangements that we can between both parties because these are all our kids, just not the school district kids, communities' kids. They're all our kids. And SRO officers have a great impact in the school, not just because of their presence, but being somebody that students can build a relationship with and having someone to talk to. And some of the programs that we looked at when we were changing to our fifth grade program here in the Shamini, those schools use SRO officers. And they talk very highly about the influence in the building and with the children about. So it's hopefully something we can expand on and bring to a greater range of our schools. We were just recipients of the $25,000 grant that the State of Pennsylvania has made available to all school districts. Unfortunately, currently, it's only one-time money. I'm sure we will put it to good use, but that type of money can't be used for something like SRO officers because that would be a recurring cost. So if we don't want to buy equipment or security items, we can, but it's not, can't be for a securing cost. So we're also waiting for results of another grant that we put in. And just for a follow-up, because I know Mr. Jones knows more about it than I do. Maybe Mr. Jones can make a few comments about that second grant and what it pertains to and the process we're in.
The state provided, I'm going with the number $6 million, I believe. I forget the exact number statewide, but all districts were able to apply and were basically guaranteed the $25,000 as long as you fill out the application properly and submit it, as Mr. Perattano talked about, a valuable one-time type purchase that you could, with that money, use that money for. The balance was more open-ended, and so we applied for upwards to, I think it's another $270,000 worth of additional one-time type purchases. And again, they vary across the district. There are identified needs that can help bolster our current security status in the different buildings, and we're waiting to hear more about that grant at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. That concludes my report, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Allen Tech School?
Yes. The Bucks County Technical High School Joint Board met October 22nd. And I am pleased to report that we made, reached a decision on, Nishamani had brought to the table a request of modifying the admissions process somewhat. And we had our fourth version, possibly our fourth meeting, we finally came to terms that Nishamani was in agreement with. We've, the, basically, it comes down to the four core subjects of math, science, social studies, and English will now be evaluated on a pass/fail. And the balance of the weighted average of admissions will be on attendance and conduct. The lottery system and the admissions process from there remains the same. That is good news for us. That was what we were looking for, some movement on the rubric they were using. Just point out that the admissions, applications to be given the number for the lottery will be Friday, or due Friday, November 30th, by 3:00 p.m. They must be hand-delivered in the main office at Tech School. Just mention that. Just mention that. I believe the only other report that I have of interest to this, to this board is that we were given a report on the comprehensive plan that's required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. We were given a presentation on that, that also must be submitted, will be submitted, November 30th, and that lays out a plan for the Tech School from July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2022. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. That brings us to the second public comment period. Anyone coming up? Okay. Any, any future comments, any future topics? Okay. Board comment?
I just wanted to thank the kids that came out from Hoover, I think that's the most fun we've had at a board meeting since I've been on, so, and everybody was very well-spoken, and it's nice to see that the kids are utilizing the technology that's provided to them for all subjects. Also wanted to congratulate Nishami Red Skinned Football, they were SLO champions, and I just wanted to thank them. I had a great season of football. I don't usually follow football, but I really enjoyed going out to all the games on Friday nights, all the home games, it was a lot of fun, and thank you and congratulations.
I'd also like to thank the Hoover students and Dr. Glennon for their presentation. I agree with Cindy, that is, in six years, that's the most fun I've ever had at a board meeting. So, I also want to thank young lady Peyton, who was helping me log in and be able to get on to play the game. I don't really think I could have got on without her, so, thank you very much, Peyton. I want to thank our tech board, and Mr. Jones this year, who's done double duty at the Tech School, being this year's principal representative. I talked to Mr. Jones last year, before he was the principal, and I know I talked to John about this as well, about the Rubik. I really think that prior Rubik did some kids a disservice. I'm glad that the tech board, along with the other districts and, and Mr. Jones, were able to come up with something that fit everyone's needs, as well as allow a greater range of students to have an opportunity to explore a vocation that they normally wouldn't have to. I mean, that makes a big difference. Over the years, I've been contacted by many parents that, to say the least, were disappointed in, in the selection process, and, you know, the fact that, you know, these, these children are asked in eighth grade to make a decision to what they want to do in ninth grade, and as we all know, you know, children's minds are ever-developing. And, you know, some of these scores that, you know, the, the children would have to present in their application, were not really, you know, reflective of what their real abilities are to do. And we want to make sure that children have the ability to explore the different opportunities available to them. Of course, there's a limited number of seats, there has to be some type of protocol to enter, but I'm grateful, I really believe this is a, a step in, in the right direction, and I'm glad that we were able to, to achieve it. Other than that, everybody have a great Thanksgiving, and we'll see you then. Thank you.
I also would like to add my thanks to the Hoover children, especially young Miss Kristen here, who helped me, because I was hopelessly lost trying to log in, so we just used her login. That was great, to see those Chromebooks in action. You know, there were, there were some hesitation on the board, or, you know, previous boards about how effective they would be in the classroom, I think that spoke for itself, that was a good investment on, on the board's part. Also like to thank our Nishami football team for a exciting season. Sorry it ended the way it did, but exciting nonetheless, and they should be proud of themselves. They did us, the community, proud. I also understand there's a, congratulations owed the band, I, I believe it was third place, correct me if I'm wrong, and I understand that they also did our community proud, as do all of our sports and outside activities. Which brings me to, one of my favorite days of the fall year in our community is the Veterans Day celebration here at Maple Point, and, which I was able to attend, and I, I just want to thank the staff and students. It was another fantastic day, and the rain didn't dampen anyone's spirits, we weren't able to stand out by the flag and get a, get a photo, as we normally do, but they were able to compensate and, on the fly, managed to get a, get a group photo inside. I had the opportunity to speak to a number of veterans, and get them aside, share some of their stories, I was able to bond with them a little bit, from what I know of my father's experiences and his brothers during World War II and Korea, and so on the men that I work with that have served in, in the military. I, I can't tell you what this means to them, to be recognized, to, to be able to come together, share that camaraderie together, and I, I just, to see the, the students interact with them and ask questions is just heartwarming. And again, I think that's, it's a fantastic, it's a wonderful gift to our community that the Maple Point students put together and the staff, and I just want to thank them for that. And thank you.
Like some of you have said, I'd like to thank Dr. Glennon for bringing the Hawks out tonight. It was fun, and I've heard from some of my fellow board members that this is the most fun that they've had in, in board meetings, so I think the board, the bar has been set, so we will be playing Fortnite at the next meeting, I think, it's only fair. With that, I'd like, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Multiple seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?